I mean, he's gonna make it.
Oh, hang on.
He's on.
We got it.
There he is. The boat man.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Are we, are we ready yet?
Yep, you're ready to go.
Calling to order, the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. We are live and in person, and also people can attend remotely by accessing the meeting link at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. First item we have on the agenda tonight is 12 Winchester Street, Gary and Bridgette Ross, special permit. Do you have the hearing to read?
I do. I'm just gonna move some people over on Zoom while I'm reading this. All right. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCalliv Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petitions of Gary and Bridgette Ross, 12 Winchester Street, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow an extension alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located in the Residence B zoning district, and relief is requested under Section 174-9E. Okay, so we have David Sadowski here, we have the homeowner Bridgette Ross, and you're the contractor, right? Yes. Okay.
Okay, is, is anybody going to have anything to say or present on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could, just identify yourself, name and address.
Certainly. My name is David Sadowski, I'm the Principal of DJ and Associates, and our workplace is 7 Cedar Street in Clinton, Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, I was also on the survey team that went out and located the structure on the lot. Basically, what the applicants would like to do was take the existing porch and winterize it so that it could become a enclosed mudroom. That would be the purpose of it, and then they would need to provide an access on the side. That access would be no closer to the street line that already exists, and it would not need any type of side yard relief if it was built like it's shown on the plan.
Okay. So, if I can summarize the plan, it is, it's an older home built before, you know, the current zoning laws were in existence. It is existing, you know, non-conforming, but what is being proposed will make the nonconformance no worse than it is right now, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Did, did, was there anything you wanted to present? I, I, I will say, at least from my perspective, I think what was in the, the packet of information was pretty clear to me. I'm familiar with the street and that neighborhood. So, I, I don't feel like I need anything, but I don't know if anybody else does, or if there's something in particular you wanted to do to advocate on behalf of the, of the applicant.
Through, through the chair again, I just want to note that, you know, we showed the utilities, the septic is in the rear, the water line would not be, there'd be, there'd be no building over the water line, so that's clear where it goes. And it would simply be an area there, they've been in Southborough for a little while now, and they want to stay there, their, their family is getting bigger, and they, they like the town, and they want to stay, and this will help them with the small lot. It was built before 1900, well before any type of zoning bylaw or any type of anything in Massachusetts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll just, we'll just go through the board, see if anybody has any questions. Doug?
No questions.
Okay. Jamie?
No questions, I'm familiar with this area, and I think we approved either a porch redo or something similar around there.
I think, yeah, you're right. Right in the, right in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so I have no issue.
Okay, thanks. Doris?
It doesn't increase the nonconformity, it's built before the zoning laws were in effect, that's in itself a hardship. I just had one question on the plot plan, and I don't think it would change my mind. I'm very much in favor. Could we put the plot plan out?
Mm-hmm.
It, it's gonna improve the property also.
Right, I would agree.
My word. It, it's just a minor question. It has to do with, I don't think we had to address, there's a shed.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. Oh, it's just in the shed.
Yeah, it was, I don't know how close it was to the line, I don't think it, and maybe it existed there from the beginning, I don't think we had to address it. That, I'm just, it's a procedural question more than.
Yeah.
But then I drove, when I drove to the site, I said, where's everybody's sheds? And that was not the closest shed, so I think I saw, too close to that, too close to the side, but always have to come.
Doris, if it's helpful, this is in the Residence B zoning district, but formerly Residence C.
Yep.
The dimensions for accessory, or, I'm sorry, the setbacks for accessory buildings, I believe, are 10 feet from the side property line.
Okay, that was a, yeah, so it was tight, but it was just a question.
Sure.
Question on there. And there's many more close than that, I assure you. Okay.
Okay.
So that was my question, just as, not a conflict.
I give, Paul, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions, I'm good with everything.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody from the public who has any questions or comments, or dialed in, or in person?
I have three people on Zoom, no hands raised.
Okay. All right, if we don't have further questions or debate on the board, then I could take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
All right, and William's aye. Okay, that closes the public hearing. Again, I don't know that we have anything really internally to debate here, I think we all understand it pretty clearly. The, I would say the only thing, if, with Mike not here, I would say, what is our finding, right? Our finding is, it's existing nonconforming, that's the hardship. It does not derogate from the neighborhood, right? There's no negative impact on it, so I'd say that's probably the nature of our finding.
Yep.
So, anyway, having said that, jumping the gun a little bit, then maybe we'll, we need a motion to approve, the application is written?
Make a motion to approve the application is written.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to approve as written has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay. Congratulations, that's an approval, and Laura can tell you what the particulars are regarding the follow-up on that.
Sure, so we have 14 days from today to write and file the decision with the town clerk, so the filing deadline for that is July 2nd. We'll try to have it earlier, but just wanted to let you know the deadline, just in case. Once we file the decision, there is a 20-day appeal period. Once that is over, you can pick up a certified copy of the decision from the town clerk's office, and then file that with the registry of deeds, and you can proceed with your billing permit. Okay?
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda starts at 7:15, and I have 7:12 right now, so I don't know that we quite have enough time to address other business before the board.
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes, so, so Laura noted that there's one that's not, doesn't have the, the correct date in, in, in the, sorry, in the agenda. So we can only do which one, the May 7th?
May 7th, yeah.
Okay. I, speaking for myself, I looked at both sets of minutes that we had for approval tonight, and I, I found no problem with either one of them, so I don't know if anybody else find, found a problem with the May 7th minutes?
No comments on my end.
No, no comment on 7th, on the 7th.
Okay.
I don't think I was at that one.
Okay, may, uh, maybe not, I don't know. It's a really good point.
Um, let me double check.
I know I missed one.
May 7th, oops, that's the agenda.
I think you were there, you made a motion.
Can we make them?
Paul, did you have any, any questions? With the minutes?
No, no questions, no comments. No, all good.
May 7th, we had a full board.
Full board, okay.
Oh, I was there, okay.
Okay.
Super memorable.
Okay, so in that case, do we have a motion to approve the May 7th minutes?
Motion to approve the May 7th minutes.
All right, motion to approve the minutes is written, it's been made, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, so that will take care of that little bit of business. I have 7:14.
At 20 seconds.
I think we can pause for 20 seconds.
Laura, I'm sure I can discuss them in the minutes, does a minor change for the 16th, if you're gonna have to rewrite the minutes?
Okay.
Okay. I'll write you, or I'll tell you after the meeting.
Send me an email.
Don't you, changing them.
Okay. All right, 7:15.
There we go, 7:15. Okay, at 7:15, what we have on the agenda is 118 Turnpike Road, Laura and Ryan Aiken, special permit. And Laura, do you have the notice for that?
I do. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCalliv Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, at 7:15 PM with regard to the petitions of Laura and Ryan Aiken, 118 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking special permits to allow an exercise facility and multiple uses on one lot. The property is located in the Business Highway Zoning District, and relief is requested under Section 174-8C2, 174-8.5C11, and 174-9. Hi, and I have Laura on Zoom as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so who is going, is anybody gonna speak for the, for the application? Either the applicant or?
Yeah, so I'm the co-applicant, yeah, so my wife and I own, well.
Sorry, yeah, just name and address.
Oh, yeah, Ryan Aiken, 10 Virginia Road, Arlington, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
And, so, go ahead.
Yeah, so appreciate your time. So, my, my wife and I, Laura and myself, we're looking to open a Betone Fitness Studio, which is a Pilates-inspired reformer fitness studio that has been in existence for about 14 years. We hope to be the 20th location, and we hope to open that 20th location in Southborough.
Okay. And the, and the relief is specific to multiple uses in one lot, and also an exercise facility? I assume that's not?
Yeah, so exercise facility is only allowed by special permit, so that particular use is only allowed by special permit. And then the multiple uses on one lot is just to cover the exercise facility plus office use.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't get that right.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, so we, I went, we went through the planning board as well, and I thought that was for the multi-use as well?
Um, so.
Forgive me, sorry.
No, so they did minor site plan approval.
Minor site, that's what it was, yeah.
For a change of use.
Yeah.
A change, thank you, thanks Laura.
Okay, I, I'm, you know, again, gonna say, I think the material that was in the application was self-explanatory to me. If you want to add anything, you, you're welcome to. If you feel comfortable with what you have, I don't, we can just see if any of the board members have any questions for you.
Yeah, nothing else to add, and I did, I sent you the one pager, so they hold that as well? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Doug, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Again, I think we've seen new uses come up for the office buildings, which I think is a good thing, and I think we want them to be vibrant and active. I don't think it has any detrimental effect, you know, there's definitely, seems to be sufficient parking for it, and I think it just adds some vitality and helps the commercial tax base, so I think it's a good use, but I don't have any specific questions.
Right, I, I mean, that, that's, it's a good observation, if it's, that's an area built for office space use, if it's an exercise space, I imagine there's, there's gonna be a lot of interchange, there's not that many cars that would be there all day, so I can't imagine an impact, but, okay, Jamie?
Nope, I have no problem with it.
Okay, Doris?
Maybe this will come up later, if we had anybody to chime in. I had thought we approved a special permit for something similar next door.
We, at, at a recent meeting, we approved, yeah, we did approve, I forget what that was, but.
Evergreen balance.
That was about a sign.
No.
No?
No.
Or the one on?
It's something similar, it was granted for 120 Turnpike.
Right, so it's 120 and 118, so I'm curious, I'm not, I'm, I'm just so happy that someone's willing to open up a business in the empty office space in general, but I would have some interest if there was some butters here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give them the opportunity if they have any, any concerns.
Other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm good, and thank you for that research, Laura, I asked Laura for some research on the 124, there is no 124, there's a 136, but I believe at the time in 1984, there was a recognition in that decision that there is gonna be a need at some point to have something other than office space, or it could be a burden or a financial burden, just to kind of, so, I couldn't tell you if that, that variance that was given carries through for the last 41 years, but that recognition is a hardship was what I came away with, so, to be able to use these office buildings for other uses.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Paul, any questions?
My thoughts are exactly the same as Doug's.
I'm sorry, what was that, Paul?
My thoughts are the, the same as Doug's.
Oh, it's Doug's.
Comment.
Okay.
Maybe I'm the other one who comments.
Okay, all right, thanks, Paul. Yeah, I, I, I really, like I said, I don't have any other questions as well. I agree with what Doug says, it's, and, and Doris, it's good to see more of that space being used, it's hard to imagine how it would have a negative impact. But having said, said that, do we have anybody else from the public who has questions or comments, either on Zoom or here in person?
I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, all right, seeing that no one has a concern from the public, then we take a, a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug, Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, that closes the public hearing. Seeing that we really didn't have too many questions, I'll take, we should consider motion to, to approve, the, the application is written. I don't, we don't know that we need to, need to really cite a hardship in this case, it's a special permit. I don't feel the need to, anyway, I think.
Yeah, so I don't think you need the hardship, just some findings about, you know, substantially detrimental, you know, the typical special permit ones.
Right, I think we know, yeah, yeah, that's a good point, as far as the findings, finding goes.
Just note that there's two special permits wrapped into this.
Okay.
The exercise facility and then the multiple uses.
And the multiple uses, okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, I submit it, to approve the multiple uses and the fitness.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve as, as applied, with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
All right, and William's aye. That approves the application, congratulations, and Laura will again provide the particulars.
So, again, our filing deadline for this is July 2nd, I'll try to have it sooner, and then, once it is filed, I'll send you a copy, I'll let you know it's been filed. 20-day appeal period, once that's done, pick up a certified copy of the town clerk's office, and then file that with the registry of deeds, you'll be good to go.
Okay, great.
All right?
All right, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item we have on the agenda is at 7:30, so, we have seven minutes here. What's that? Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's use it.
So we did the approval of the minutes. We do have discussion of 120 Turnpike Road subdivision and easement plans. I don't, I don't know, do you have, is there anything new there to, to discuss this evening, George?
George Bonner, on behalf of the applicant FD 120 Turnpike LC, nothing new to discuss except for the plans that were submitted to the board previously. It's just for you to review and ultimately vote on if you're ready to vote.
Okay, and, but, but some of them were about the easement not covering the area, was it supposed to be updated?
Yes, and it was.
Okay.
So the new revised plans, which have expanded the easement area, that was one of Nitch's concerns, Nitch had two concerns.
Yeah.
One of which being, the easement area in the previous version was not expansive enough as compared to the limited work on the site layout plan. It was within the boundaries of the limit of work, whereas they should have expanded beyond the limit of work.
Beyond, okay.
So that was corrected, and also the riprap just north of the proposed building was slightly encroaching onto the 20-foot no disturb buffer.
Yeah.
So we had repositioned the riprap so that it's completely outside of it, and the easement is outside of that 20-foot no encroach.
So, so essentially, everything that was raised is now addressed in the, in the documents.
That's right.
Yep. Okay. So it is with us. Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying that. Sometimes that's how it works out, isn't it?
Yeah.
Back to us. Okay, thank you.
Um, I did want to just note, sorry, so our peer reviewer did say that he was fine with the easements, but he recommended a condition that all grading be constructed within easement limits, and following construction, a stamped as-built plan showing the easements and as-built improvements be provided to the town to demonstrate substantial compliance with the approved plans. I don't, that was a lot.
And we wouldn't have any objection to that condition as recommended.
Okay, all right, I think, I guess we're just sort of housekeeping, we have to make sure we keep track of.
Thank you. I have hard copies of the plans, I'm not sure if you're ready to endorse them tonight. And I also have the correct type of Sharpie to use.
That's very convenient.
Um, I'm not, do we want to have a look at that? I mean, this, this is not a hearing, we can do this any way we want, right? Just to, just to confirm, I don't know if we want to try to do that now, or feel a bit more comfortable just confirming that, again, there's just, you know, the items that, that Mr. Bonner just listed, just confirming that's all in there.
I don't have a problem with that. If you want, after the hearings, if you guys want to look at the hard copies and compare it to Jay's notes and our peer reviewer notes.
Okay, yeah.
If that makes you?
I was gonna say, we just, we need, we need something to compare it against, so. All right, let's, let's do that.
So should I leave the hard copies with you, Laura, or is this gonna happen right now? Sorry, I just.
Excited.
Yeah, yeah, probably, probably not right now, we'll, we'll, but we, we'll, I think we'll, we'll try to take a look at it after we, we talk about 2:50, if that's.
Fantastic.
Great.
I would suggest, take the plans.
Yeah.
That, you're ultimately gonna either sign them or not sign them.
Agreed.
If you like to sign them, you're gonna do your due diligence, and you have them.
Yeah, we, we, we do, we, we did intend to keep them there, to review them. What's that? Yes, agreed, yeah.
Let them go.
Yeah.
We'll have to take them back and revise it, if you don't have an issue with the plans, you'll sign them.
Agreed.
Tonight or in some other meeting, it doesn't matter, do what.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I, I agree, thank you.
And we gave you the Sharpie.
Yes, that was, that's gonna seal the deal. So. So, thank you for that. We, we also had, now we have two minutes. I don't know if we have ADU bylaw discussion. I will say Mike's not here. He and Doris were a big part of it, so I don't know if that's something we want to just sort of table until we, until Mike can be here?
I think we could table till Mike could be here, but there was an update that for November, maybe a warrant article is going to come up to clean up the language.
Okay.
Consistency, and I'd like Mike to be here, so if we can, and I had a point on some of the older language, just to, to put one article up, to remove one line item regarding the, it's kind of inconsistent with ADUs to, it makes it more inconsistent where you had to have, excuse me, no more than, is it 10% since 1979, as accessory dwelling units?
Oh.
And, and do you remember, there's like four criteria, I believe?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In order, anything over nine, is it?
Nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, nine hundred square feet, and there's a line of code in there, and when it came up, nobody had been doing the tally for probably the better of a known number of years, and maybe it's a nice time to pull it out of the code.
Okay.
That's all, so that was just something we can open up for discussion and.
For the record, I did, I did the count. I did it like three years ago, but we're only at like 1%, so we're so far below the threshold.
Right, 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 so but.
We might as well not even have it.
Right, so they, so, I mean, if you can get it on the warrant to say just that, we're not using it, and no one's probably actively tallying it, and I really don't know if it conflicts with just the ADUs in general. Do they go in the count? They don't go in the count because those are by right, so I didn't see the functionality of that line of code anymore.
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
1979, we could let it go.
I had some opinions on how the, that was written as well, that I would, I would like to, you know, at least weigh, weigh in with what I thought maybe we wanted to.
Right, so we can table this too, Mike, and I, and I'm not sure how we circle back with the new initiative. We need to work that out, the new initiative to some of the different points, and Mike needs to be here, moving authority, and there was a couple other things that were on the warrant article last time, so.
Okay. It is 7:30.
We made it.
And we have 250 Turnpike, Zero Parkerville Road, FD 250 Turnpike LLC comprehensive permit. This is a continuation, so don't need to read a notice. So I believe the, probably the top item we've got on our agenda this evening is to talk about the comments that came back from Lucas regarding the vernal pool that, that, you guys are clearly up on that as well, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to be back with you. I'm Brian Charville with Ferris Development Group, here representing the applicant FD 250 Turnpike LLC, joined by my partner in crime, Lou Levine, and also Attorney Bonner with us. And you're right, Mr. Chairman, just to catch up, it's been a couple of months since we were last here substantively before the board. The board though will recall that the timing of this project was good in that we had feedback from your peer reviewer that seasonally it would be a good time to do a migration study to see if there were animals moving between wet areas of, on the property. And so that study was able to happen basically over the course of March and into early April. That was led by our wetlands consultant, Goddard Consulting. And then that resulted in the report that you all got, which didn't just touch on migration and how they saw the animals moving between the wet areas, but also there was a suggestion of a habitat study, which was at the latter part of that same memo. So that memo came in, and then it went to Lucas, I think, in early May, and then in the meantime, or mid-May, and then Lucas was able to get feedback on the memo to all of us, and then we've had Goddard for the past couple days taking a look at, seeing what we're able to do. And that brings us to tonight. So we have representative from Goddard here, and I know Mr. Orzal's here from Lucas, your peer reviewer, and so if it's all right, we thought Mr. Rosine from Goddard could speak and talk about the report and the migration that they observed, then you guys could hear from Lucas, and then we can tell you what we're prepared to do. But long story short, in talking with Goddard, we're able to respond to in a future memo, but most importantly, engineering-wise, accommodate the suggestions that Lucas has made.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I would say, rather than try to address, I mean, there's a lot of information in the memo here, maybe we can talk about what, where the conflict was, where, you know, Goddard and you are regarding what was brought up, and then if we need to hear from the gentleman from Lucas, we can, you know, hopefully we can move through these. Is that okay?
Mr. Chairman, I think at 10,000 feet, there isn't a lot of conflict.
Okay.
If you want us to say there is, so we can, there isn't.
Well, I'm, the reason I say that is, I did go through the memo, and what I'm taking from it is, you know, Ellie's saying, well, this is a vernal pool, it's not, you know, I mean, if, if you're in agreement with the points raised, then that's fine, but, and maybe if you want to, just go through them and acknowledge if you have a problem with any of them, and then I can move on.
Ryan from.
Goddard?
Goddard can give you that overview. We're trying to keep it, you know, a 10,000-foot overview.
That's fine.
You know, and I know it's rare, but we're not coming here, you know, rolling on the ground with your consultant, you know, we've taken it, they want some additional information, and they want some things, and we've looked at them, and we said, we think we can do them.
Okay.
And, you know, they're not committed to the solution yet. They indicated solution is generally what they were thinking about. We have to engineer the solution.
Okay.
They'll have to review their solution and say, that's what we, that's what I think
Okay.
we should do or not do.
All right, so are you, do you, I think I'd just like to hear, like, of those things, if you're just saying that, that's fine, if he wants to go through it.
No, no, if Ryan will address those issues.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm asking. I would like him to do it.
No, no, we will.
Okay.
It was our intent always, I just want to at least have the board understand that in a general sense.
Okay.
Okay, this is not a huge pushback.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it's going to be issues, maybe, maybe not, maybe it'll resolve themselves.
That's, okay, all right, that's good to hear, thank you.
Good evening, again for the record, Ryan Rosine with Goddard Consulting, a wildlife biologist. Yes, I was going to give a little bit of overview of, you know, vernal pools and everything, but it doesn't sound like that's necessary tonight. I will just give a brief just synopsis of the study and what we found. I know you guys have all had a chance to review the study. But basically, we did that detention basin that was in question as it, could it be a potential vernal pool? After our study, we did see that it wouldn't meet the qualifications under the natural heritage guidelines to qualify as a vernal pool. We saw, you know, it is a confined basin, and it was constructed as a detention basin. It does have an outlet at a certain elevation, so water can't get super deep, but it is deep enough most years to support breeding amphibians, at least in the state that it is in now. We did see two obligate species of vernal pool species used in the pool, which were the spotted salamander and wood frogs. Those are obligate species under natural heritage. We also saw a number of other species using the pool that are not obligate or facultative, meaning they can, they'll use other wetlands to breed and.
Do you mind defining obligate for me?
Yep, yeah, sure thing. So obligate species are species that need to use vernal pools for part or all of their life cycle. So spotted salamanders and wood frogs, in addition to some other state-listed salamanders. But spotted salamanders and wood frogs, particularly in this case, require vernal pools in order to breed. So they'll go into the vernal pools in the spring, lay their eggs, and they hatch and then metamorph, and then go back into the uplands by, you know, late spring, early summer.
Right there.
So that's what that is, they require it. There's other, there's facultative species, which are like spring peepers, American toads, and a couple other species where they often use vernal pools for part of their life cycle or for breeding, but they don't necessarily require it. They'll use other wetland types. They'll just use regular swamps, you know, other freshwater wetlands, so they don't require to use vernal pools.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the difference between obligate and facultative. And facultative is the easiest way to determine if it's a vernal pool or not. So we did see some of those, and then there are a number of graphics in the report showing the direction, the likely direction of travel where the vernal pool species of salamanders and wood frogs were coming from, based on what trap we found them in during the study. So in some of those graphics, you would see basically a cone shape, which basically meant somewhere in that direction, kind of going out that way, it came in from that direction. So we were just trying to see where they were coming from, were they mostly coming from the west, the east, you know, north, south, and so that's the main purpose of the study. We also had the other pitfall traps along the proposed roadway to see if, if any of those amphibians were moving across where the roadway was, which could indicate that the roadway would be a migratory barrier to them. And so there is a slight indication that there could be some migratory impact to them, but I think that's one of the concerns that Lucas had raised previously, and that's one of the concepts that we're looking into, how to mitigate that impact. And yeah, so they're up on the screen, you can see, so that one is specifically for the wood frogs, and there's other ones for the spotted salamander and just the other amphibians, but you can basically see that for the wood frogs, a majority of them around that vernal pool that's on the left there in that dark blue, were coming from the east and south. So that just kind of indicates the general direction of where they were likely coming from. And similar for the spotted salamanders, a pretty similar direction. There weren't all that many salamanders or frogs that we found, and, you know, we had about 50, I can pull up the exact numbers, we had like 50 observations in total, so we suspect about 20 to 23 individual wood frogs, because we captured them going in and as well as out, so those all counted as observations, so, and same thing with the spotted salamanders, there were a few, a few less spotted salamanders, about 13 to 18, we suspect, individuals. So it's not a huge population. There are some on this site and probably slightly offsite in the surrounding parcels, and that may not be all of them either. They may use some other wetlands in the area, and I know there's wetlands on the other side of Parkerville Road that could potentially serve as vernal pools as well. And so we did receive the comment letter from Lucas just the other day, so we've kind of been going through it over the past day or two. And, yeah, we generally, you know, have no issues with any of this. There were, I can kind of go through maybe a couple things, and then if you guys have any specific questions.
Sure.
Or if, or if one of Lucas Environmental has anything, we can always do that as well. So we did use, you notice in the report as well as Lucas's review letter, we did use a document for basically best development practices for residential and commercial developments in the northeastern US. We use it as a guideline, basically, it's not regulated, it's not, it's not regulations, those aren't, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act and the Southboro Wetlands Bylaw, they don't go by these, the guidelines in that document, so we just use it as a general guideline. In the best-case scenario, yeah, you would follow everything in that to preserve, you know, habitat and to reduce any impacts to vernal pools, but that's often not possible, given many locations of vernal pools. And this one is kind of unique, it is a detention basin, it's, you know, it has commercial development, you know, to the north, you've got Route 9, you've got residential developments kind of surrounding. It's, the habitat on-site is not the best, but it is, you know, suitable for them, clearly. There's lots of invasive species. The southern part of the site has less invasive species, so it's slightly better. But one of the things that we were willing to do, and we had mentioned previously as mitigation opportunities, is to, you know, obviously invasive species management, remove all those and plant native vegetation that would actually improve the habitat for these species. And so, one of the main things that we used in the report was basically, in that best practice document, was a vernal pool envelope, which is 100 feet around the vernal pool. Try to keep as much of it as, you know, possible. And right now, the proposed project is, proposes develop 12.9% of that, so a majority of it will remain undeveloped. In addition to that, much of the area around that has a lot of invasives, so that would be then removed and then restored, so in theory, you'd get even better undeveloped buffer around that pool, you know, post-construction. In addition, there's what they call, let me think, the critical vernal pool habitat, which goes out to 750 feet, so an initial 650 feet from the vernal pool, from the 100 feet, from that first 100 feet, which, you know, is outside of any regulations for state or local, but under the best practice, that's kind of the general direction of, you know, the size of habitat that a lot of these species, you know, use, based on previous studies. And so, let me find it right here, so, give me just a second, okay. So, the proposed project is proposing to alter about 20, almost 21% of that critical terrestrial habitat, which leaves about 79% of it intact. So that is a good portion that's remaining intact and suitable for these species. So, you know, we'll have Lucas review that information, this is the first time, you know, Joe is hearing those information, those numbers, because we just got those yesterday or today. There wasn't too much else that I think we needed to respond to right now. Like we said, we're looking at the potential of mitigating any issues with that roadway crossing between those wetlands. We're floating the concept of a wildlife crossing under the roadway there to see how feasible that would, and that would improve, you know, the connectivity between there as well as, you know, because that's the direction that a lot of the amphibians seem to be traveling.
Right.
So if we maintain a corridor right there, they should, in theory, you know, have a better chance of, you know, surviving and still using those areas.
Where, where is that, that you're talking about?
So it would be right above units 20, above 29 and under 30, yeah, so right there, right where that L-shaped retaining wall is there, right in between those two wetlands, yeah, the closest spot between those wetlands is where we're floating the concept there, so obviously the engineer has to see what's feasible there and everything with that retaining wall, see what kind of design changes need to happen in order to fit a wildlife crossing there.
And our engineer looked at it today and told us that the projected height of the road at that location is 10 feet above where the forest floor is today, so there's a lot of room to work with. And so the idea is with the structures that would be built, the existing forest floor, you know, that's kind of the closest spot between the two wet areas would remain.
Okay.
And the road would just be protected, the road would be built above it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that actually provides a lot of room, a lot of height for a crossing there, you know, suitable enough, because there are studies that have been done of a suitable-sized crossing for wildlife. If you do a really tiny one, a lot of wildlife isn't going to use it, even salamanders and frogs, they're not going to use it. You need something, you know, two, three, maybe four feet in height and wide in order to like successfully move.
It's kind of a culvert under the.
Yeah, basically, it's a culvert for no stream.
Yeah.
It's an upland crossing, basically, yeah. Migratory travel, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't too, too much else. You know, just wanted to reiterate the fact that, you know, although a lot of the work, all of the work is outside the vernal pool habitat, and outside the 20, 20-foot of that vernal pool, so there really shouldn't be any impact to vernal pool habitat, so under the WPA vernal pool habitat, it extends 100 feet from the vernal pool insofar that it's in, within another resource area. So in this case, since I believe the Southboro, the Concom, made a determination that basin is BVW, if I'm remembering correctly, so basically 100 feet, it wouldn't extend anywhere because the boundary of that vernal pool is the. because the boundary of that vernal pool is the same as the BVW, so it basically has no vernal pool habitat. If that was per se inside of one of those wetlands, either the one directly to the north, it was like interior to that, 100-foot buffer would extend to the wetland line as far as 100 feet would go. So, it may only be two feet in some sections, it may, it may be, you know, 42 feet in other sections if it was inside of another wetland or in like riverfront area, but that's not the case in this scenario. So, under regulations, there is no vernal pool habitat here, and we're outside of the 20-foot no disturb under the wetlands bylaw for that vernal pool. So, that's, that's kind of a high-level overview. I don't have anything to add right this second. If you guys have any specific questions on the study or report or anything that you saw in there, I can answer it, or you can turn it over to Lucas Environmental or.
All right, I'll just give the board a chance. Doug did, or anybody have any questions for?
I have some comments, no specific questions right now.
Yeah, okay. Jamie?
I'm good.
Doris?
I have a question.
There's a question.
It's simple. So, in your first opening remarks, I say within the first three sentences, you had said that that vernal pool, even though it is in a drainage area, was created because of drainage area, and qualifies as a vernal pool, or does not qualify, and I read that in the, in the report also. Is it, or is it not a vernal pool?
It is technically a vernal pool.
Technically, because just by nature, just.
Because it holds water in the springtime for enough, enough a time in order to support the breeding amphibians, the obligate amphibians.
So, it falls under the definition of the protections?
It does, yes, even though it was originally created as a detention basin.
Right, it's.
It now functions basically as both.
Which is, is natural in my mind.
Yes, it can happen, yeah, yeah. There, there are plenty of detention basins that have turned into vernal pools through either lack of management or just the, how they were designed. I don't know if, if this was maintained, you know, for the past couple of decades, if it would be how it is now, I can't say, I don't think anybody can say, but as of right now, as it currently stands today, that does qualify as a vernal pool.
Yes, it's just a clarity that.
Yep.
It is in fact, even however it became to being.
Yep.
Likely unnaturally, but it's natural and it's.
Yep.
Falls under regulation.
Yes.
Because the way it reads is, it's not, but it is, okay.
All right, that was my question.
Paul, did you have any questions?
No questions.
All right, so, again, I'm going to apologize and reiterate, I think, what you already said, Lou, but you're basically saying you don't have an issue with, with the findings, it's just a matter of getting to the solution, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Would, would you like to, do you have any, anything to add, or are you, what you, I think you, you alluded, Ryan, to the fact that some of the things that you're talking about here, he's hearing for the first time, correct?
Right.
So, it's not really, we're not really going to be able to get to resolution on this here, and do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll be providing a response, as Brian had meant, we'll provide a response to the board as well as to Lucas.
Okay.
Responding to all of the comments, and then we'll see how it goes from there.
Okay.
And I think we're at a point, Mr. Chair, where it's important for the two experts to be able to talk to each other if the board is okay with that.
I, I agree, I mean, that's kind of what I think we're relying on, is our expert with Lucas that work with, with yours, so that's perfectly fine with me. But I, I don't know if, I, I would, I would take any questions from the, from the public based on where we are now. I don't, I don't know how much we, they can do, but I, I feel like I want to give them their opportunity if anybody has any questions. So, I don't know if anybody does on Zoom, I think they're debating, would you like to? Okay, all right, if you could just.
My name is Blair Sutherland, I live at 139 Parkerville Road. So, I, I had an opportunity to perhaps, as, as the board has, as a layperson, look thoroughly through the report from Goddard that was commissioned by, by the Ferris Group, and I was, I guess, a little relieved to, to hear that I read similarly as to what the gentleman had, had said, that this does indeed, the area does indeed qualify as a vernal pool. So, I guess based on, and a lot of the, or some of the statements tonight were somewhat technical, I followed them, I think, as best as I could, you know, the board may have some similar kinds of questions, but I guess maybe what I might want to ask is, as things begin to move forward and as the ZBA and the town consider this, is, given the fact that this is a vernal pool, is there a process, or should the ZBA and/or the town be thinking about referring this study to mass wildlife and in order to use some of their expertise to weigh into what has been found here? Now, I will say, based on my reading, that's, there's a process that follows reporting vernal pools. My layman's take is the very thorough report, which, which the Goddard Group seemed to do, seemed to encompass what mass wildlife would want to know in terms of things like where the species was found, which direction they may have had photos, whether there's eggs or nesting, all of that seems to be in this report. So, I guess what I'm, what I really want to get to is, would the ZBA, and I'm not expecting an answer, but my recommendation is that the ZBA take this thorough report and, you know, conversations, you know, between the, the applicant notwithstanding, and consider having mass wildlife, who are indeed the experts, and they write the regulations for what is or is not a vernal pool, or whether a vernal pool qualifies as a critical vernal pool, or whether it's categorized as a, as a critical vernal pool, and, and use the resources that are the, the subject matter experts in order to assist the town in coming to a good decision. I guess the only other thing I would say is, you know, it, it jumps out at me that, that a, you know, that trying to do a, a culvert necessarily for, for invertebrates to move through kind of makes me scratch my head. I am not a wildlife biologist by any, by any means, but it, it gives me pause for thought, and I would ask that the ZBA think about, think about calling in or resourcing the experts based on the information that you've received so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. My, I can just tell you my initial take, what would be, I, I guess I'm hoping that our, by bringing in Lucas and Goddard, that we, we have that, that level of expertise. I don't know if mass wildlife adds more that these, these people can already cover, but I, I think I, I would like to take your point that we'll, we can, we can take that into consideration, but, you know, part of it, I, I think what might be to consult, Steve, with you and Jay in that regard, what our obligations are, what we're actually being, what's being covered currently with our existing peer review. No? Go ahead.
So, I haven't personally reviewed the peer review comment, but, I mean, typically the way peer review works is when the applicant has somebody working for them that has technical, you know, specific technical qualifications, whether it be, you know, engineering here on the environmental side, they have to pay for a similar, you know, a comparable subject matter expert.
Correct.
To, to review it with, with a specific duty running to the board, to, you know, to review it from the board's standpoint, to make sure that everything's on the up and up. So, while I've not reviewed the specific contract, my expectation would be that.
Yeah.
We, we have somebody on our side that has the same expertise, and I would be surprised if a, if a government entity that, you know, doesn't directly owe us an obligation would, would be more, more effective. I, I would, I, I would guess it would probably be, I, I would think we would get the highest possible level of service from our peer review consultant.
Right, right, I mean, that, that's my take as well. I, I think it just becomes a question of, is there some differentiation there?
Ask a question too, I, I don't fully understand the request, because what I hear is that both experts agree that it's a vernal pool, so why do we need to now go to another party and say, is this a vernal pool? It just is like wasted time.
Picking up what the town council said, you've, I don't mean to, you know, dot the i too many times, but you've hired and we're paying for.
Yeah.
Your, your review. And obviously, they owe a direct obligation to the town to.
Yeah.
And, and they've exercised that. The fact that we came in tonight and didn't roll on the ground with them was because I think we had a professional review, I think, and we want to move the project forward in a positive way, all right? So, you know, we could sit here and argue about every granular sentence.
Hmm.
I don't think it would be productive. We discussed this before the meeting, you know, and so, you know, Lucas made a complete review, they want more information, we need to supply, they haven't signed off on the project beyond, you know, your question about the things that Ryan mentioned tonight, they haven't, if you read their letter, they haven't signed off on the project.
Right.
We need to do more, and we're willing to do it. We, from our professional vantage point, having done this before, we believe that we can get to the finish line. We may have no guarantees, but we believe we can get to the finish line, and the town will be happy and Lucas will say what we've done is appropriate, no guarantees, right? So, that's it, I mean, and plus, mass wildlife, you know, they don't just take projects because people say, can you get your review, you got nothing better to do today?
Yeah.
It doesn't work like that, I mean, you're lucky the state even takes jurisdiction when they have jurisdiction.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see a point to contradict them.
So, you know, and by the way, I'm not going to give too, too much expertise, but the idea of culverts has been something that's been used for years and years and years for wildlife to, it's not, we're not creating that.
Yeah, we're, I, I would say, in, if I could speak for the board, I would say we, again, in the process, we did go through it for 120 as well, we are relying on these folks to get together and, and hash it out, and I think I, that's what I mentioned to you earlier, Brian. So, yeah, I take your point. It's fair to raise the question, but I, I am kind of initially just expecting that, that's covered already with the, so.
John Palmer, 131 Parkerville, a director butter. So, what I'm hearing out of all of this is that this is in fact a vernal pool and a vernal pool habitat that's worthy of, of protection under the mass wildlife regulations, and that's why mass wildlife is involved here. And I think it's under the jurisdiction of both mass wildlife and local Concom to protect this, this vernal pool if we're, if we all agree it's a vernal pool.
Well, I, I think we're, we're under both, like, again, our environmental review, peer review, and, and, and Concom, they, they would both have a say in that.
So, I guess, I guess my question is, why aren't we letting mass wildlife know that, hey, we have a vernal pool habitat here and, and get it designated as such under, under their protection?
Excuse me, those are two points. One, one of the point is somebody, I don't know if that, that person's in this room, notifies mass wildlife, and then there's the secondary, I'm not really in favor of having mass wildlife go in between two qualified consultants, so if we could, that's how I'm, this is like a separate idea in my mind to, somebody might want to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And do we, I don't.
I'm not clear.
The jurisdiction, I don't know.
On what mass wildlife would do for us, if you could, how, how do we come to the determination, although it seems like we did, that this is a vernal pool? Who certifies that?
For the record, Joe Orso with Lucas Environmental.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, it was, the Conservation Commission determined initially that it was a wetland and had sufficient evidence to be a vernal pool. The recent evidence that was submitted further back set up and meets the certification criteria. Now, the vernal pool, generally under the Wetlands Protection Act, is not protected unless it is certified. However, they do allow protection if the pool has been shown to contain the requisite evidence of, for certification to be protected as a vernal pool. So, it's not critical that it has to be certified at this point to be protected as a certified vernal pool. Everyone's agreeing that it is a vernal pool, and it may actually, whether or not mass wildlife or natural heritage would certify it, there may be some question there because it is also a stormwater management basin, and they may or may not be agreeable to certifying a vernal pool within a stormwater management basin. So, that, that's, you know, something, I think the only reason that natural heritage would need to be notified is if we had evidence of an endangered or threatened species that was found in the pool. At this point, what we have are common, common vernal pool obligate species as well as facultative species.
Yeah, so in, in short, you don't really see that going to mass wildlife does anything here for us?
No, I, I don't think that that's required at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any raised hands on Zoom?
No.
Okay, if anybody else in the public wants to speak? All right, so, just regarding where we are, this needs to get, you know, go forward, you need to get agreement on how you address these items one by one, correct?
Yes.
What are you thinking as far as timetable goes, and how much do we need to push the, the approval date or closure of the public, of the meeting date?
I think sitting here in late, or mid-June, I would say we could extend the public hearing closure date to the end of August.
All right.
And we'll, we could hopefully substantively pick this exact conversation up at the July meeting, if that's all right.
Okay.
July, we're the 16th.
Yeah.
So, sorry, you said closure, close the public meeting, push that out to the end of August?
Please.
So, that, that again is something that.
We'll get your letter tomorrow.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And, sorry, regarding next meeting, you, you believe July 16th?
Yes.
Is possible?
I think four weeks from tonight.
Did you have anything else for this evening? Or no?
No, just to tell the board that we've made progress on the septic design.
Okay.
And so, we hope to have update on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
David, is it okay if I provide just a couple comments on this topic?
You.
Before we move on?
Please do.
Yeah. So, just first want to appreciate Lucas Environmental, it was a very detailed response, so thank you, it was really helpful, and obviously Goddard, the report was great. I do think the wildlife crossing obviously seems to be a, you know, a particular item, which would be great if you guys could accommodate. It's also great to hear that it wouldn't, because did some research, some of them are very small, sounds like you guys are looking at some that's a bit more substantive, so, which I think would be good. One of the questions I had, though, was, you guys do have a current Concom order of conditions on the detention basin, correct? Does that allow you to clean that, or does that change?
It does.
I just want to reiterate again, this is a detention basin, right, that has become, and so, you guys tomorrow could literally go in there and clean that.
We have to wait till July 1st under the order?
But, yeah, so.
Give the organisms time, but yes.
And then also, right now, just looking at the plan, the wetland immediately adjacent to it is unobstructed, right? Obviously, the one that's across the proposed roadway would be obstructed, so, I mean, I think you answered my other question, there is no endangered species that have been found in there, right? They're all common species, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, I appreciate the back and forth, and I, you know, look to see if the, the two consultants continue to work together on this matter, so, thank you.
All right, good, thank you.
Anyone else, Jamie, Doris?
Paul?
Okay, so, I think to take care of business, we need to continue the public hearing to July 16th, 2025, and what do we have for, on the schedule that evening?
We have nothing, so.
Okay.
This will be it.
We can make it, we can make it at 7:00.
Thank you.
7:00 PM. I do need a motion and a vote on that.
A motion to extend the public hearing to July 16th for 250, 250 Turnpike Road.
I think you also have to vote to accept the extension of closing of public hearings.
I think you also have to vote to accept the extension of closing a public hearing to whatever date.
Yeah.
And we'll need the applicant to.
No, we indicate we would.
Yeah.
They should vote that too.
Yes, they should.
Okay, before or after procedurally?
Let's do that first procedurally. You're right, Lou, thank you.
Okay.
So they're saying extend, the motion would be to push the, the closure of the public hearing to August 31st, 25.
I make a motion to extend the public hearing through August 31st, 2025.
Second. All right. Motion to continue to, yeah, to push the closure date to 8:31, 2025. With a second has been made, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay. And, yeah, the next order of business would be to continue the public hearing to July 16th, 2025 at 7:00.
Okay, to make a motion to continue the public hearing to July 16th, 2025 for 250 Turnpike Road.
Second.
All right. Motion to continue has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug?
Paul? Aye.
And William's aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so let's just look at our, one. I think we did everything. Let me, let's take a look.
Shall we sit tight for any discussion of the 120 turnpike plans?
You know what, that, I, I think, I think you're right. Again, that, that, it's not a hearing, we agreed we'd take a look at it. Think, let's not, let's not yet, what is it, dissolve or meeting? Took on, we talked about the updates, the upcoming schedules, July 16th, that's all we have?
Yeah, it's July 16th and 250 turnpike is the only thing. We can pick up the ADU by law discussion on that date as well if you want.
Okay. But, I don't know, I'm just thinking like procedurally, where this is just an item on the agenda, can we actually close the, you know, the meeting?
I, I think if you're gonna do discussion, keep the meeting.
Okay. All right, let's keep it open. It's probably the right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna need to vote if you approve them as well.
Okay. All right, let's take a look at the, at the, where can we roll them out?
They're hiding. You guys are gonna review the plans?
Yeah. But we, I, I think the suggestion is that is against what we had for commentary on that, right? So we know exactly what we're approving.
What's that? Sorry.
I discussed the forehold, who's the subdivision team? So there's the subdivision in the A here. I'm gonna give this to you. Yeah. And if it's helpful, I can go through Jay's notes and our peer review notes just to make sure that they jive with the plans if that is what you want to do.
Yes, I mean, it feels to me like the first thing we want to look at is where the easements are, are outlined, so we can make sure that that complies. And, okay, actually easement plan of land, there we go. One of two. Actually, this is what confuses, I swear, these things always look the, the same. So what, what was the, what did he have as the, as the notes?
So as far as the easement plan, he requested that the trail easement with proposed markings be added to that plan. Did you guys add that?
Yes. And if you look at the southeast corner of where the septic system is, you'll notice a easement connecting Lot 4B to the existing conservation land.
I don't think we have, we have two of these, right?
I'm gonna put it up on the thing too.
Isn't one of the lots, the six acres that you're.
Correct. That would be Lot 4C.
4C. Okay. Would you like the subdivision or easement plans first up here?
Well, the easement.
Easement? That's very easy. Okay.
C4B. Oh, here it is.
And it's tiny. Hold on. Yes.
This is 4C.
Okay. And let me, there you go. A little hard to read.
Yeah. You'll definitely want to zoom in if you can. And I can.
Give it one click.
There you go.
Now, can you scroll down a bit?
Pretty good.
Okay. Correct.
You were, you were, that's, that's where the septic is, correct?
Yes, exactly. That's, that is the proposed open space parcel, we're proposing to donate. If you look at the southeast corner of Lot 4B.
Oh, I see.
You'll see a small rectangle connecting Lot 4B to Lot, to the existing conservation land.
Right. This, this one right here.
Correct. And that's the trail easement.
I can see it on the map.
Okay. So that one's there. An easement table describing each easement.
And that'll be in the bottom left-hand corner, the plan.
Right there.
And one thing we note, we noted on this plan that the surveyor had not included endorsement lines on the easement plan specifically.
Okay.
And so you won't be able to physically sign that tonight, but if we could get approval, we'll submit an updated version that just adds lines.
Okay. Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. But there are endorsement lines on the subdivision plan.
There are, I'm sorry, say they.
On the subdivision plan, there are lines for you to sign.
Okay, okay.
They're present.
Thank you. Yeah, so there's, so there's the table, yep. A, B, C, D, and E. Thank you.
And then, I'm not sure if this is easement plan, subdivision plan, or both, but the 6.2 acre parcel should be labeled as open space with an explanatory note that it is to be deeded to the Conservation Commission.
On the plan.
Correct. It's on both plans and in the notes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that is where.
Right there, open space to be deeded to the Conservation Commission.
And then as far as the easement plan, this version was sent to our peer reviewer and he said he has no issue with the current easement and the riprap can remain within the easement, so he's good with it. And then it was just a condition of approval that all the grading be constructed within the easement limits and following construction, they should submit a stamped as-built plan showing the easements and improvements to demonstrate substantial compliance with the approved plan.
Okay. Out of curiosity, where's the, where's the riprap that they were talking about?
It is just north of the proposed 40B building. There, if you go up, you'll see a little triangle in the wetland. It's not, it's actually not in the wetland area, but.
Is that?
Yeah, if you can envision, it'd be the top right-hand corner of Lot 4, 4B.
Okay. And there's, I see a drainage easement there.
Do you see a triangle?
It's a triangle.
Yes. That's the riprap.
Says it's drainage easement. And it, that's.
I think some confusion came down to literally just where the lines fell.
Okay.
Because of the CAD files or whatever they are.
Correct.
Where it's just a line on top of a line and.
Okay.
So.
But the, but the concern regarding the easement related to the riprap, they're not concerned about it?
No concerns.
Okay, very good. Okay. And then without, was that the last item? Was the, for, I'm sorry, could you just read the last one? It was about the as-built, right?
The condition that all grading be constructed within the easement limits and following construction, a stamped as-built plan showing easements and improvements be provided to the town to demonstrate substantial compliance with the approved plans.
Okay. From my perspective, it, based on Laura's reading of Jay, of Jay's notes, it looks to me like it does meet what we're looking for, so. Does anybody else have any concerns? All right. So I, so the, the plan then is that you can, you take what you have, add the endorsement lines for us to be able to sign, correct?
Yes, we'll drop it off at the office.
How, how many, how many signatures do you need?
We'd like everybody if possible.
Everybody? Okay, all right.
Is that everyone who votes on it?
Yeah, we'd like.
Like I was gonna say.
That would be, that would be preferred.
Like Mike is not here, so he would not be signing it?
Is he, is he gonna vote on it?
No, because he's not here. Right?
We, how many members do we have?
Five.
We have five.
Four present.
And Paul.
Paul's still with us. You're muted, but you're still here. You still count, Paul.
I can have Paul come into the office to sign.
Yeah, not, not everybody has to sign tonight.
Yeah.
Paul could sign after, in fact, that's, that's fine.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
But, but I mean, for, for clarity, are you saying you would provide some that have the endorsement lines for us to sign, right? So, so one, we're, do you want us to sign these tonight or we're gonna sign the ones that have the endorsement lines?
We'd like for you not to sign the easement plan tonight. We'll drop a new one off at the office.
Okay.
But we would ask that you endorse tonight and sign the subdivision plan.
The subdivision plan, okay, thank you.
Which has the requisite lines.
So you guys can, if you want to approve these, you guys can take a vote to approve. We can sign subdivision and then we can coordinate signatures in the office for everything else.
Okay, so the, then the first, I order of business would be to vote to approve the easement plan of land for our FD 120 turnpike LLC, correct?
Yes.
Does anybody want to make that?
I'm gonna, I'll make a motion to approve the easement plan for 250 Turnpike Road.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve has been made with a second. All in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Right. And William's aye. All right. And we also need to approve.
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision plan.
Let me bring.
God, how many times have you heard about that? I, I'm just reading a lot of easement, okay, is, oh, there we go, because you have.
I'll bring up the subdivision.
Oh, this looks like it's glorious.
This looks like Mylar.
You know what it is? Yeah, it is Mylar. It's the final plant.
I haven't seen a Mylar print in ages.
It's pretty.
Incredible.
The registry still wants them.
Do they know why?
Okay.
Why?
I think clarity.
They're.
I say the print clarity.
Now.
Scanning.
Okay. Well, here's a lot.
But is, I, I'm sorry for my ignorance on this, the subdivision plan, there's nothing really to review here and debate, right? It's just a matter of having a subdivision plan.
Correct.
Yes. It is the recordation of this that will create lots for A, B, and C that we've talked about for so long.
Okay. Any board members have concerns with?
I think the only comment on this one was that 4C be labeled as.
Open space.
Open space and noted that it's to be deeded to the.
To be deeded to the Conservation Commission, and it is on here.
It's on there? Okay.
6.2 acres, yep.
I have the wrong one. Oh. I have the wrong one up here.
That is the wrong one.
It is on there.
It is. I, I see it right here.
Sorry.
Actually, this is one of the ones. So this is, this is the one that we have to sign.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on this as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Before we do any formal signing, we need a motion to approve the subdivision plan of land for FD 120 Turnpike.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision of land on.
Plan of land.
Plan of land for 120 Turnpike Road.
Second.
FD FERS.
Second.
All right.